Good afternoon and welcome. This is the August 5th, 2024 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the doors to your right, proceed to the right, and down the stairs. If that is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments will be heard after each agenda item. If you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the Assistant City Clerk. We'll start off with a resolution to accept donation of real property located at 307R, Delaware Avenue, from Robert Dale DeShield Jr. and Charles T. Caputi, brought on by our Chief Minshine from Salisbury Police Department. Chief?
Good afternoon.
There we go. So I wanted to bring this before you. This gentleman that this company that's donating this property actually had tried to donate this sometime several years ago. From what I understand, I wasn't privy to that, but this is really what I'm calling the last holdout along Burton Street and Delaware Avenue for us to acquire. So in order for us to enclose, our goal is to close in that section of Burton Street to encompass that as part of our footprint. So we would have maintenance over that. There are quite a few, as you may know, some security concerns in our back lot. We have had some incidents back there, some serious security issues. By acquiring this property, it would allow us to push forward as funding permits down the road to encapsulate that as part of our footprint, to be able to reinforce that road. And our ultimate goal would be to fence in the additional sections of our lot for the security of our employees.
Great. And you said this is, to your knowledge, it's been a long time coming.
Yes.
And just to, I want to just, I know that the ordinance is there for the public to see, but due to the current zoning requirements to build, it does not have, meet the existing zoning requirements to build a house on it, and it doesn't have direct access to Delaware Avenue. So again, this is good for the police department. I want to preface that, that again, it serves, you know, minimal purpose for.
That's correct. It's really a depression, more so now used as more of a drainage area, but it's actually kind of in a bowl and an indentation there, and it's not suitable for, and you'd have to, it would require probably twice as much, four times as much as the property's worth to fill that in to be able to get that.
Sure. Council, any questions or comments?
No. Is this the?
I said no, didn't I? I've got to get acclimated back to this.
I'm sorry. That's funny.
But is this the house on the corner?
This is actually a vacant lot.
It's a vacant lot?
Yeah.
Is that the vacant lot where you park at?
It is.
Okay.
So if you're actually go on Burton Street and you're pulling, you're taking the right turn, pulling into our back lot.
Yes.
If you look to your left, it's that, it's that lot right there. It backs right up to this, to the old Save-A-Lot.
Yes.
The rear entrance there that's blocked off. It backs right up to that save lot.
I thought you already had it.
We did acquire a, the piece right next to that several years ago. So this is really kind of like I said, the sort of the last holdout for us. The property you're referring to, we did acquire that several years ago, and we do, we put some rush and rundown there. We actually store vehicles on that now.
Okay.
This is where you're going to park the Tesla, the Tesla.
So just from a 30,000-foot perspective, if we have this property donated, Burton Street, that is kind of a one-way access into the police department and then stops because there really is no rear access. Talking with the new property owners of the Salisbury Plaza, there is no need for rear access any further right now. So this would allow us with that property to decide if we now do not need through traffic on Burton Street into the rear of that shopping center. So this would allow us to, next steps would be to consider securing the police department's parking area and that stuff. So, but we couldn't do that without this piece of property. So that would be the next step in the bigger conversation to kind of secure the police site.
So will that be closed off after you?
Potentially. That would be the next step if we want to go that way, because there is no need any further to have that as a rear access point into that shopping center. So yeah, that would be, so just understanding kind of the future goal. And if you were to close off that part of Burton, if we own both sides of the property, that would be a piece of property that we would have. So then it would essentially become a driveway into the police department. So this would allow us to, from a site security standpoint and just a full site kind of comprehensive plan to be able to kind of move forward with the next steps of the police department's greater footprint in that area.
The further development of those lots is on the CIP, has appeared on the CIP for a couple of years, so.
Great.
Step by step.
Seeing no public comments, council, do we have consensus to move this forward to legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Chief, we'll move forward to the budget amendment to appropriate funds received from the recovery and recycling of scrap metal.
Thank you. So this is brass, actually brass or qualifications or weapons qualification. So at the end of each qualification, whether it be our department or allied agencies, this brass is collected. The shell casings basically from ammo that's been used, and we store that until we have a sufficient quantity, and we take that to the recycling. And it's amazing the value of this brass. And then that brass, traditionally what we do with that is once we receive that money back, we roll that, we kind of pay that forward into our, generally speaking, pay that forward into our ammo account. So it sort of pays for itself, at least partially, over time.
And just as a question of curiosity, how long did it take to reach that $6,000 mark there?
About six months.
Wow.
We qualified.
Dave shoots a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, there's just smoke coming from it.
Yeah, geez.
Wow.
Six months.
But that's good, I mean, that's good that we're able to, you know.
And keep in mind that all of our officers, allied agencies, plus the police academy, utilize that range for qualifications. So there's quite a few rounds over time that get, and there's also maintenance on the range that has to be done every so often to mine the berm and so forth. So this is just a way to kind of recoup some of those funds.
Thank you, Chief. Seeing, council, any comments? No. Seeing no public comments, council, we have consensus to move this forward to the legislative session?
Yes.
Yes, great. We'll move forward to an ordinance to amend Chapter 12.20 Chesapeake Bay Critical Area overlay district with our city planner Amanda Rodriguez. Amanda, thank you for coming. Glad you're feeling a little bit better to join us in person here and not Zoom as we previously planned. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, so if this looks familiar, it should be. Earlier this year, we went through and had this exact same item on the agenda for work session. The difference is when we first came in, we had a map that adopted the boundary of the critical area, but not the delineations of the three areas, the intensely developed area, the limited development area, and the resource conservation area. The other difference here is that you're seeing a copy of the public hearing that we had at Planning Commission this past month, and then a copy of the draft ordinance to adopt the maps, the delineations, and changes to the code to reflect those new maps.
This is my second time seeing this, but council, any questions or comments on this? Amanda, can you just give a high-level overview of just what this means in the critical areas map and just, can you give just a 30-second?
Yeah, sure. So critical area state program that manages the buffer area that's 1,000 feet landward of Chesapeake Bay. So it's a lot of our properties that border the river. The state was using wetland maps from the 70s, so they've now updated the maps using GIS and field data as well. So they notified a bunch of property owners, said the boundary is shifting, your property is now in the critical area, or it's no longer in the critical area, depending on how the tides have changed things. So this is just to update so we're more accurate.
Absolutely. Thank you, Amanda. Seeing no public comments, council, do we have consensus to move this forward to the legislative session?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you. And thank you so much again for being here. Hope you continue to feel better.
Thank you.
Yes. Move forward to the veteran banners presentation, Councilwoman April Jackson, County Councilman Jeff Merritt, and a couple folks from the VFW District Number 16, along with our Arts, Business, and Culture Director Alan Swigger. Okay. Councilwoman Jackson, if you want to kick us off and invite your folks to the table, and then we'll get it started without Alan.
Jeff, District Commander 16. You want me to go ahead and start it?
Good afternoon, folks. If you could just state your name and your, just who you're representing.
My name is Calvin Mitchell, District 16, Commander.
Jeff Merritt, Wycomico County Council, Minuteman press, Operation We Care.
Thank you. Councilwoman, we'll turn this over to you to get it started.
The idea behind creating the Salisbury Hometown Hero banners is to honor individuals serving the nation. And those who have made a sacrifice for our lives to defend our country could not have thought of a better way to show our appreciation and to help people to never ever forget their brave, the brave men and women who have served the nation and passed, and those who are serving our country today. These banners will be in celebration of our servicemen and women. It is a living tribute to recognize them all. Now, as I have read, Andy had sent me some information, ordinance is getting ready to come up, from what I'm understanding, that you have to, you want to rotate or have certain holidays or days that these are done. But hometown heroes are heroes every day. They're not just something that you can just put up and take down. They've been used to that. When they first came out of the military, they were used like that. They weren't celebrated. They weren't giving the appreciation and the respect that they should have been given. And this is now a time where we should be giving back to our veterans as a city. I'm hoping to take this with Jeff, to take this to the county as well, so we can have him just hanging around everywhere, because we need to know who our servicemen and women are. We need to know, we need to appreciate them, we need to celebrate them every day, not just today. I don't feel as though they should be put up one day, and when another holiday comes down, they're taken down. I just don't feel that way. I just feel as though these are the people who gave their lives for me to live. I wasn't brave enough to go in the military, but they were. I regret not going because of the benefit of going in the military, but I didn't do that. But these are people that did, and did not know whether they were going to come back or not. Some didn't come back. So I'm just adamant about that ordinance, and I just want to make sure that our hometown heroes are hung throughout our city and our county, and I'm working on a county, the city especially right now, that they are hung and hung with pride and dignity and respect. We owe it to them.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you for joining us, Mr. Swigger. If you all want to, and collectively, there's, you know, just explain what this is. I know, and Councilwoman, if you want to jump in here as well, explain to the public and to us what this idea is, how it came about, and then how this logistically can happen, what are the next steps. So can you give us an overview of what, what the banners are? Again, I know many of us, I don't want to assume that everyone knows what this is.
Well, I can honestly say, riding around in different areas, small towns, and I'm seeing these banners, and I'm like, wow, this is nice. This is, I mean, and you see it all through some of the little small Harlock, is it Snow Hill, Fettlesburg, Sharp Town, and I'm like, so why can't Salisbury do this? And I'm looking, and I'm like, this is a magnificent way to honor our veterans.
Give them the size.
Well, he's gonna do that, Jeff's gonna do that.
Okay, well, if you want to pay, I want to make sure we give some, some.
No, Jeff's is gonna do that.
All right, so Mr. Merritt, if you want to give an overview of.
We're, you know, this is obviously close to my heart for a lot of reasons. The ones that we do for Hebron and Fruitland, they're 18 inches wide and three, three feet tall. They can be bigger. I wouldn't recommend that they be smaller, because keep in mind, you're driving down the road, looking at them, and you want them big enough where people can see them while they're driving down the road. If you're, most of them are taken up after the Memorial Day, Veterans Day holidays. They're not left out all year. They can be. If they do, if you want to do that, we have to use a different material, because there's things called sunlight, UV, you know, you don't want them to look old and tattered after a short period of time.
Sure. And Mr. Merritt, just to, these are banners that are placed on, like our light post or our flag, you know, these are banners that would represent and memorialize. Can you just give, I want to make sure that.
Just like the ones that are hanging now, only they're a little taller. They're three feet tall instead of, I don't know what the sizes are.
The size, you explained exactly what we have out there.
Okay, all right.
And exactly who would be memorialized, or who would be, you know, with, on these banners?
Well, most of the veterans who would want to, their families would want to memorialize their family members, if they were veterans. Most of the veterans that are still living, they would possibly do their own banners, and we would ask them to pay for their banners. We wouldn't ask the city to do any of that. We would ask the actual families, the men, the women, the veterans, to purchase their own banners.
I know that you all, this has been a topic that you all have discussed and have entertained and kind of thought of already, so if you want to give some background with the city and where we are, and we can maybe make the, kind of marry the two and make the two.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, it's a great initiative, don't get me wrong, but we have to be sensitive to every awareness initiative that we get asked about. Downtown in particular is set up with banners. We have drafted a banner policy. We have to do some fee adjustments to make sure that we feel comfortable with it. It hasn't been something that's been brought up a lot. We pretty much use it for downtown, you know, events and cultural events that we host and what we manage. That being said, you know, there's only 65 spots downtown, and when we talk about a lot of other folks, if we want to open this door, which I think we should, there's going to be a lot of other people that have an interest in doing this as well. So creating a fair and balanced approach is what I'm trying to do. That being said, that's just the hardware we have. Doesn't mean we can't get more hardware, doesn't mean we can't find other locations that we want maybe more longer-standing awareness to. And again, I'm just talking downtown. There are light poles all over the city of Salisbury, the park. I know, you know, the parking lot at the Civic Center could be a great location with the War Memorial there. So I think there's a bigger look at where we could actually place these that might make sense. My policy that I've drafted is specific to just the downtown area, so.
Well, my thing was the entire city. That's, that's the way I'm looking at it, because you can't get everybody up in the downtown area. And how would we pick and choose who we were going to, to do? That wouldn't be fair either, and that's why I want to go to the county too with this as well, so we could take it to a greater extent as far as just the city. But I think that if we, how many poles did you say we have here?
65.
We've got 65, so that gives 65 people an opportunity when we've had gross thousands to leave Salisbury, Maryland, to go in the military. So I'm just saying that we, I'm not seeing 65 working. And like I said, how do we determine who goes up and who doesn't? That's the only thing. So that's why I'm saying that we need to do something a little different here. And when you said that, okay, other towns, I heard Jeff say it, but when I go to Harlock, theirs are still up. Theirs are still up. When I go to Fettlesburg, theirs are still up. They're never taken down. I've never seen them down. I've never, every time I go there, I see them, because that's what got me, you ride through, I'm like, wow. And it's a wow. It's a wow. And I just wanted to, and I know I've come back, I've come back rough, didn't I? But I come back because I really feel adamant, and not because I am a member of the auxiliary of the VFW, but because the respect level, the patriotism to honor these people.
President, I think it might be a good idea, if it's in our purview, to determine whether we want them to go up and down, or as April is saying, I feel the same way she does. I think it should be, once they're up, they stay. And because then, Alan, you're not having to keep track of take it down, put it up, you know, and keep track of who, you know, who goes where. So if it goes countywide, then it opens up much, you know, a much larger venue for people to participate.
And I think the two can coexist as well. I think you could have sections that do rotate. Downtown branding and messaging is still important for a lot of grants that we apply for, Main Street Improvement Grants and things like that. So we do have to leave a little bit of area for some flexibility, but again, like I said, there's no hardware at, and plenty of poles.
And just to, just add a couple to that, there was something that, you know, hit media this past June on allowing certain banners to be put up during the month of June for an awareness thing. We've got to be sensitive to other entities, organizations who may be interested in celebrating things too. So if we have forever locations, that means other people may not have the opportunity to participate. So we just got to think about it globally too. I think there is a real opportunity to be able to do something. We just have to decide if it's kind of a forever spot, who maintains that cost and the upkeep, and then also if there's a rotation, if it's a shared pole, for example, to give people equal opportunity. We just have to make sure, and that's, I think, why we have this very dynamic conversation on what we want to do, that's kind of semi-permanent to permanent installments, because banners or art or whatever it is, they have to, we have to understand that space, that they exist.
Well, something else that you were just talking, Mr. Gittero, about, I can see these as two different venues almost, where you have the light poles with the small three feet by 18 banners, for what Alan is saying, a rotation based upon his determination with grants and things like that. And then April and I were talking about, say, let's take Unity Square, and then that is not designated as the hero banners, but that's designated for a possible stanchion of some sort, not just one, but maybe four or five, where different groups, as we had in June with Pride Month, that the Pride organization could actually, PFAG could actually fly, could actually create a banner that the city determines would be a guideline for everyone. You can do the, you know, opioid crisis, you can do Heart Month, you can do all those things, being designated at Unity Square possibly with a different type of a banner that we would decide that those groups would also purchase for themselves. So different options, and upkeep was something I hadn't thought of. So yes, good point.
So Mr. Swigger, just bringing the conversation, what, and I think this is where Councilwoman Jackson and of course you, Council, Councilman Merritt come into play, how much time is needed to kind of button up the banner policy, and then looking into the footprint, the footprint beyond the downtown scope, and also working in that policy of some, of the temporary versus permanent, like how much time would you say you need to allocate where we can come back and we have some more definitive answers to answer some of those questions to satisfy the needs of all of those in the community?
Yeah, so to finalize the downtown banner policy, it's going to take a fee ordinance adjustment, because it's not included in the fee schedule for FY '25. So we have to feel comfortable with that, get that moved forward. Simultaneously, I think we're looking at, maybe Jeff and I go take a tour of the county, right? And identify some spots within the city and outside of the city that we feel that would be suitable spots to really consider this. I mean, you're talking about, you might know people that I don't, $100, once you create the banner and get the hardware for it. So I think we could have that done within the month to just identify some spot.
Okay.
I think that's good.
One thing to keep in mind, not that the banners would be restricted to family members that reside in Wycomico County, there is 191 names at the Wycomico County War Memorial whose home of record was Wycomico County when they were. So that's, that's a big number.
Yeah, and I just want to add to that conversation, whether it's memorializing somebody or celebrating somebody, anything of permanence, you'll eventually run out of space. So understanding how we want to do that. So even when you're like, well, I want to donate a bench in Central Park, in City Park, I want to have a tree planted, all those things, there's again, a limited amount of time. So if we're going to do anything of permanence, if it doesn't rotation, we do want to make sure that we understand at some point you hit a cap, and what is that cap? So 191, is it less than that, and then, and then we're out? So what is this lottery system that we're playing? But I think everybody wants to celebrate, so I 100% agree with Councilwoman Jackson. If we'd like to celebrate people and their accomplishments and also their sacrifice, it is very important that we do that, but we just need to make sure, we think it all the way through, so. And both have two different tracks, I think, temporary and permanent.
Yes, exactly.
And I would add, I mean, rotation, you can have a permanent pole dedicated to a cause that rotates the design of the banner. If you have 191 people, 10 poles, you rotate them every month. You can hit a little bit larger numbers with less, you know, square footage and effort there.
Exactly.
Something about.
Yes. Councilwoman Jackson.
The banners all use the same hardware.
Yeah.
It's a matter of rotating the banner.
I just want to see it happen.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to see it happen.
So we will.
And we can tweak it and work it however, but I want to see this come to pass. They deserve it. And many, many women left this city and county to go fight for us, a many. I remember a few of them not ever returning. So I just want to make sure that we patronize them and show them that, the homage, and show them that, you know, even though they can't see it now, but we care. We do care.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah, yeah, get it to the mic.
My name's Calvin Mitchell. I'm a Vietnam veteran and two-time Purple Heart Pacifican. And I'm in favor of the banner, because, you know, I mean, it's been 50 years since they recognized us. It was 19, I mean, 2017, when they finally put in law of the Vietnam Veteran Day. You know, it's a shame that, you know, it's going like this, but this is what's happening. So now, this is another way of showing us that you care.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for sharing that. Of course, thank you for your service and your sacrifice. And that's just, I think that's a good point to make, is we want to do this right, make sure that we honor and dedicate that space to as many as we can with the footprint that we have. So I'm looking at our calendar, so we'll kind of, in our minds, think about the September 16th work session.
Oh, yeah.
Well, if you.
I have, I have a question.
Okay, so we'll, so we'll, we'll think of the date and we'll talk about that, but if you want to give yourself that, that month, and then we'll button that up a little bit more, and then with that. So thank you all. Move forward to our public comments that we have on this topic. We have Ms. Andra Roberts, Andra Roberts. You want to go to that, if you don't mind? Thank you.
Slightly different, sir.
Good afternoon to all. I'm here because from what I've heard, I'm grateful for what everything has been said. And I too don't think enough publicity has been given to our veterans. I had an uncle who passed away April the 22nd. He was a Navy veteran. He received several honors. He was also a veteran who received many honors and also received a Purple Heart. When we went to, when the family went to his burial site, we were going through Harlock, and we saw several banners there. Well, we felt somewhat honored after grieving, and you going through Harlock where his final resting place is going to be. We felt honored by the town of Harlock honoring him and giving us some solace and some peace and some comfort. I have an uncle who lives in Bridgeville. He also is a veteran, and he has a banner that hangs outside of his house every day. The banner never comes down. So he said to me, he said, something came to my mind, he said, I have a banner outside of my house, which is in Bridgeville, and I want to see that for my brother. He served so many years and also received a Purple Heart. He loves Salisbury, Maryland. He could have gone somewhere else. He's traveled throughout the world, but he was proud to come back to Salisbury, his hometown, to prove to us how much he, as a veteran, loved the city of Salisbury. Of course, we go to Ocean City when you're along the border. Of course, we go to Ocean City, when you're along the boardwalk, what do you see? You see a parade of banners of veterans. And I too feel that for the city of Salisbury, and I, I'm not sure also the county, there should be enough space to honor these people. They don't get enough publicity. They fought a fearless fight, and I think this is a time for us to say, job well done. So I hope and pray that the city and/or maybe the county will consider this. I'm proud of Salisbury. My uncle who lives in Bridgeville, this was a vision that he wanted, so of course I had to contact April and the appropriate people. He wakes up every morning, when he sees that flag, what does he think of? His brother, who has passed away. So we were honored when we went to, and the family went to Hurlab. Of course, the grieving process was not done, but when we went through Hurlab, that made it a whole lot better. And my uncle as well said, "Why can't we do this in Salisbury? This is his hometown." He could have gone anywhere, but he chose to come here. And as he drove around Salisbury with his Purple Heart tag, that made us so proud, and he was very proud of the city of Salisbury. So we as people want to make Salisbury know that, yes, we are proud of our veterans. When they ride through Salisbury, whatever areas or whatever activities, we too can say, "Well done, thy good and faithful servant." So I pray that this will be a consideration for the city of Salisbury. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts? That's a thank you, we appreciate it. Alright, that includes the, concludes rather, the agenda items for today. We'll move forward to administration updates and comments. We'll start with you all, um, Mayor Taylor and City Administrator Kitzrow.
Just a comment and a highlight, uh, National Night Out is tomorrow night, so hopefully people are available to come join us in the city park. We're looking forward to that, it starts at six o'clock. Uh, appreciate the hard efforts, um, of our city staff and our police department to get that organized, and all of our community volunteers and vendors who'll be out participating. So, um, weather permitting, hopefully everything works out great tomorrow.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor?
He's still one of my talking points. Um, I just want to, um, thank the, uh, Field Ops guys, Mike Dryden's group, uh, I was out yesterday morning early with a storm, and we had a fair amount of tree downs, uh, trees down in, uh, the Village of Tony Tank, as well as in the park, and they've done an excellent job. I'm sure they've got several days left, um, we've got a little bit of work to do in the Johnson's Dam area with some trees down in there as well, so they're doing a great job, and we just want to ask for the public's patience as we work around the city to clean it up, so, thanks.
Great. Thank you all. Uh, Council, we'll start, we'll move on to you, Councilman DeShiel.
Um, just to dovetail on what Mr. Kitzrow said, um, thank you to Sergeant Hitty, who is heading up the national, or taking responsibility for that National Night Out. Welcome back, April. Welcome, Julie, you're joining us. And personally, having been in college, dating myself through the whole Vietnam, thank you so much, Commander Mitchell, and thank you, Jeff, so for all your dedication and what you did for all of us. Doverdale, uh, visit, we had fun going to the Doverdale Neighborhood Night Out, that's, when it comes to your neighborhood, or if you're close by, participate, Rachel does a great job with that. And, uh, I think that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
I have a lot. No, like, store it up. First of all, I'd like to thank District sixteen Commander Calvin Mitchell and the members of Post one oh one five nine for supporting this effort, and Andra Roberts as well, and, 'cause this is the kind of support we do need. I would also like to thank our Councilman, Jeff Merritt, for coming forward. I know he's the man with the master plan when it comes to the veterans, he's Operation We Care, and I've seen him go far and beyond for our veterans, so we appreciate you. Also, thank you, Alan. Um, I would also like to announce that Saturday, this Saturday, August the tenth, is Unity Day at the VFW, eight twenty-one West Main Street, from twelve to five. Um, it's a fun-filled day for the community, family, and friends. So come on out and get some of my fish sandwiches. No, but I'm serious, though, I'm not playing, I'm serious. Get some home, get a good home-cooked meal. But I, you know, we do these things, you know, it's not always about taking, it's about giving back. You know, you, you thrive on receiving, but when you get to give back to the community, there will be all kinds of games and bounce houls and all kind of information stations. Salisbury City Police will be there, the Salisbury Fire Department will be there, we'll have SU, Sidell School of Education, we'll have the NAACP, uh, we'll have Faith Over Fear, we'll have many entities for you to gravitate and get knowledge, because knowledge is power. But we also want to have fun and enjoy ourselves. Our mayor and most of the city council will be attending that day, um, and we just look forward to having a, a great time together. So, um, also, Sharon, Sharon's on top of things over here. Sh- Sharon really is, and I love her for it, because you're going to, you're going to announce this one, and I'll announce this one.
That's the same event.
Yeah, but it's, it's something different.
Okay.
The West Men's Society present their, um, annual concert on August the seventeenth, and it's at the Lake Street Playground. And I don't know if Sharon knew, I was coming today, but Sharon was on task with getting this information, and, and that's what I like about her, she's on task with everything. And that is from eleven AM to nine PM, and they have all kind of talent contests, they have a good time over there, they have school giveaway, they have bands, DJs, everything. So if you don't have anything to do on the seventeenth of August, show up there too as well. Uh, we do great things in our community, we do great things in District One. So come on out and just enjoy yourself, it's fun, it really is fun. And everything is basically in the softball, the old softball field on Lake Street. And those, these women, they actually, they love what they do. They love what they do, and they do it well, so I'm just asking you to come out and, um, support them as well, support the VFW on Unity Day, which is the tenth, and Sharon.
Slam dunk contest, three-point shootout. So that's worth going to see. And as April said, we were sharing this information because, um, a couple of the gentlemen from the West Men's Society came to the think tank that Jordan Ray does, was doing all, um, in the spring, and they were promoting this because it's a way of getting our kids involved. And as a retired teacher, our children are our future, and we can't let them slip through the cracks. So when we have events where they get excited, it's, well, it, it benefits everyone.
And it's a five hundred dollar first-place cash prize. I'm going to slam dunk.
I want to see that. I would pay, I would pay five hundred dollars.
Is it a slam dunk and a three-point shot?
He wants, the mayor wants to race me.
Ah! I heard she was quite the speed demon when she was younger, so I'm challenging.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and, and glad to have you back here with your-
Glad to be back.
Councilwoman Gregory?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, welcome, welcome to the, the heat, Julie. I'm so glad to see you up here with us. Uh, we had a great, uh, retirement party, uh, for our, now former clerk, she is enjoying retirement, she's had her first few days of freedom, um, so I am, I'm hoping she's in her garden having a blast. I just want to also, uh, give a shout out, there's a lot of great events this week, there, on Friday, from eight-thirty to noon, there is a business expo for National Black Business Month going on at the Civic Center. So, um, come on out, support these businesses. Um, there's, uh, workshops and all kinds of great things going on over there. If you're a business owner, come check it out. If you are just looking to support black-owned businesses, come on out.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President?
Well, I mean, by the time it gets down here, so much has been said. Uh, but just definitely, um, welcome back, April.
Thank you.
Welcome back, it's nice to see you. And, and, and of course, welcome, Julie. And, and I do want to give a special thanks to Councilwoman DeShield and Gregory for really, really helping pull that final farewell for Kim. She so deserved it, but it was so nice, it just pulling together, it was such a lovely event. It was so nice, and we're definitely going to miss Kim, and she's actually already on vacation. Isn't that lovely?
Mm-hmm. You had a well-planned out.
I love it too. And, and that's it, that's it.
Blood bank, blood bank.
Oh! Damn!
So I didn't forget everything.
That's the truth, thank you, April, see you got to come back, keep me track, and if you are healthy enough, please, please donate blood, you could donate plasma, be an organ donor, you just never know, your gift is a gift of life.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you-
Thank you.
-council members. Uh, as they, everyone is, as everyone has stated, again, tomorrow's National Night Out, so please come out, wonderful event. Uh, I remember, I think it's one of the largest and one of the first events that I remember volunteering at years ago with the Salisbury J.C.'s. Um, the, there's a business after hours for We Are Limitless, that is, um, a wonderful organization that has painted and helped paint a lot of art and murals in the city. So they have their mixer, um, it's going to be at one of their completed murals, uh, on, at Route thirteen, next to the Auto Zone, I believe it's, um, there's Quality Staffing Services right there. Um, and they just completed a memorial, or a mural, rather-
On the Purdue Building.
Yes, on the Purdue Building, very beautiful, um, mural, so definitely go check that out. We have, uh, a Housing Action Committee meeting this week, uh, the Junior Fire Academy is going on this week, and they have their graduation this Friday, so I'm excited, excited to, to go by there. We have the Unity Day, as Councilwoman Jackson stated, at the VFW post, so excited about that. Also, the Black Excellence Community Foundation, um, Community Fund, they have their dinner and grant awards this Saturday evening, so, uh, very busy week, but I love when busy weeks are, are happening, that means there's a lot of good going on in our community. And also, since, um, again, there's, um, kids are going back to school here soon, uh, summer is winding down, there's a lot of back-to-school giveaways and, and backpack and school supplies drives and those things, but special shout out to, there's a group of, I, uh, I guess young, but men, uh, particularly in the west side, who are doing a lot of good things and giving away free haircuts for the full day, and doing, uh, hair braiding and, and hair, I mean, that's a, that's a huge effort, much needed, and so special shout out to those, their names are escaping me, I'll shout them out next week, I'll make sure I write it down, but-
Yeah, I'm too bored.
Yes, so, uh, wonderful thing they're doing and definitely needed in our community, so, um, we'll, I'll detail the, the, those events next, next time, as we get closer to, um, those events, but I, I love it when community comes together and, and supports each other, because that's what makes us, uh, who we are and what we are, so, thank you for that. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned. I'll call for a motion to convene and close session number one to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation as authorized by State Government Article three dash three zero five B seven and eight. Council will consult with Attorney Patel to obtain legal advice regarding, and to consult with staff regarding the Wycomico County Circuit Court's recent decision in the matter of Salisbury Town Center Apartments LLC as it relates to the city.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.